There it is, behind us. Would you like to lead us?
To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Morandi?
Here.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Delotto?
Here. Okay, welcome everyone to our monthly meeting. I'd like to go over tonight. We're starting to get into budget season, plus we have a report, financial report from our treasurer, accountant, still not sure what we are, all of the above. So, um, we'll start with that. Um, so, Michelle, if you want to give us some highlights or concerns or whatever you'd like.
Yep, let's start with the financial, um, report aspect. So, financial reports through January 31st. Um, tax collection this year, um, we're at ninety-eight point six percent. The rest of the taxes have been sent over to the county. Um, we should receive a check mid-March to early April for the difference. The total penalties this year is ten thousand, a little lower than last year, um, but I guess more people decided to pay on time. The payroll taxes, W-2s, 1099s, all that stuff has been done. New York State Fed year-end taxes for the village have been done. Um, and the Affordable Care Act are almost done. They just have to be printed and then they'll be handed out, um, next week. So, going over the big thing right now is EFC, Environmental Facilities Corporation. As we know, Greg, with the water, um, the sewer side, has two projects that were just going on, sewer rehab and, um, the pump station. So, now that those projects are substantially complete, um, the short-term financing, we have to go to a bond. The good thing is because it's the EFC, half of the interest is subsidized. We're looking at to go a twenty-year bond. Um, we could do a little less, we could do a little more. But EFC suggests twenty years, and that's what we've done in the past for other bonds. So, I think we should stay with the twenty years. I don't, we don't know any interest rates. Um, the bond will close in June. Right now, they're still doing all the preliminary work for us. So, we won't have an interest rate until closer, but we don't have a choice. We have to go to bond with EFC. It's part of the contract that we did when we took out the short-term financing. So, we were eligible for eight-hundred-and-sixty. We got the grant, which is twenty-five percent of expenses, and then we bond the rest. We didn't spend all eight-hundred-and-sixty. It looks like we'll be bonding somewhere from five-hundred to five-fifty.
Are there any bonds coming off anytime soon?
One came off last year. Uh, the sewer, we knew that this bond was coming, and that's part of the reason why we raised rates a couple quarters ago in anticipation of this bond. Other than that, um, in turn, anybody have questions about the bond? I don't have too much details about it yet because it's still early. I just wanted everybody to know that that's what we've been working on the past couple weeks. For our financial report, uh, for revenues and expenses, for being two-thirds of the year, I think we're pretty on track. Revenues, most of our revenue has been received because most of the village's revenue is the taxes. Remaining revenue, uh, money from Phillips Town for fire protection, franchise fees, and if we do CHIPS-eligible work, then we'll get a CHIPS payment. Otherwise, any money that the village receives now through May is just going to be small dollar amounts here and there. For expenses, um, we're fifty-six of the way, um, spent for the budget, which is less than two-thirds. But there are large expenses that come at the end of the year. Um, so, um, four months of health insurance, that's a big ticket item. The fire service award contribution, that's going to happen in May. First payment for the new police vehicle. Highway vehicle, I think we decided to look at CHIPS for that. And then also to go with CHIPS revenue, if there's any CHIPS expenses to be spent by May. I've worked with Fran, and I think everything that's CHIPS-eligible so far has been sent off to the state and we've received payments for.
When does the, um, highway vehicle, when's the first payment due on the highway vehicle or the payment due if we go CHIPS?
We, for our highway vehicle, we won't know when the payment's due until it's delivered. It's usually thirty days after delivery.
When's it, when is it scheduled?
That I don't know. It's still in production.
So, it probably won't be this fiscal year, right?
Um, I'm thinking, do you know, towards the end of April, maybe?
Um, I was told somewhere in April.
So, we might catch it.
I think it'll, we'll get it in this year. Um, it was budgeted for in this year, our first payment. So, I, um, if we don't go CHIPS route, it would be in our best interest to get it through this year because it's budgeted for that, you know, fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand. Um, but if it's CHIPS, it doesn't matter because CHIPS keeps rolling.
But if it is CHIPS, we have to pay for the full pay?
Yes. But that doesn't matter when it's spent because we get the money back. For next meeting, I'll have a budget resolution to move some money around from, some of the expense lines are overspent. Um, so, I'll take care of that. Um, does anybody have any general questions about the revenue and expenses?
Can we ask specific?
Yes.
Just kidding.
Some of them I right now.
Much as early funds, do we have a?
I emailed Doreen. She said she was looking into it. Um, that revenue's already been accrued for, so it's just in the bank that we need. Steve, I saw you looking. Do you have questions?
No, I'm just checking it out.
Okay.
Yeah, we can move on.
Okay. So, then, um, a couple other items for discussion. Um, that's the small packet I just handed out. Um, working backwards, I did a budget line. So, assuming we don't add additional meetings, I worked off of regular scheduled workshops and monthly meetings, the budget would need to be adopted by April 23rd this year. It has to be adopted by April 30th, but there's no meeting because that week's the fifth week of April. So, some departments I've already spoken to, and I have some preliminary numbers from them. Some other departments will have it to me in the next few days. Um, I've started doing, um, some work on my own for like the village stuff. Let's skip to the two handouts behind it. The board needs to consider if they want to do raises. That's something I worked on, a presentation. Um, these are just illustra- ilish, I can't say that word, for show. If you guys want to see a different percentage or no percentage, that's fine, too. I just started with a one, one and a half, and two percent to consider for employees, and I did different percentages for stipends and annual compensation to get the discussion started, um, if the board wants to give raises to anybody or nobody. So, these are just two worksheets for you guys to take home, look at, um, ask me questions, let me know what you want to see. And then, you know, guys will have to talk about it, too, amongst yourselves. And there will be a couple workshop meetings. Um, March 5th, I'm going to be able to email you a preliminary budget. Um, and then March 12th is going to be the longest budget meeting, where we would go by, um, line by line and go through a lot of the accounts. So, if we wanted to start that meeting a little earlier?
And which date is that, sorry?
March 12th.
March 12th.
That's the plan, to be the biggest workshop budget. We could do meetings before and definitely meetings after. But the tentative has to be, uh, solidified by March 20th.
Do you think we need a, a half an hour or an hour, or six or six-thirty if we start that one meeting?
I would start at six.
Start at six, alright. Everyone good at six o'clock on the 12? Lynn Murray?
Yeah, I'm good.
Where are you?
Yeah, well, yep.
Okay, six o'clock.
Six o'clock on the, March 12th. And then, so the second part of this worksheet is questions to start thinking about. One question that I would like to try and have answered tonight, but we don't have to, is the tax levy. How much do we want to raise taxes, if any? The village is eligible to increase the tax by forty-four thousand overall. Uh, it's about two-point-seven. We can raise taxes up into two percent cap or inflation. Uh, two percent is less than inflation this year, so it's the two percent, plus whatever growth we have. We have point-seven percent growth in just taxable properties. So, it's two-point-seven, forty-four thousand. We can raise all of it, none of it, or some of it. Um, any thoughts?
You said we have point-seven percent growth in taxable properties, like, uh, can you explain that to me?
Taxable assessed properties. So, if the assessor has raised the value of any properties, um, some butterfield probably in here. Any houses, um, that were redone.
For sale or just in general?
Just in general, in the village, um, that was reassessed, whether it was built or the assessor felt that it needed to be reassessed, somebody asked for it to be reassessed.
Because they sold it or something? If additions go on, do they get reassessed for addition, if you have an addition put on your house?
Yes.
They get a CMO, yeah.
A sale doesn't, uh, reassess.
My only thing, I think we have to think about when we're doing this, is if we don't get the AMES money, that's sixteen thousand. So, that gives us only thirty thousand over last year, or less than that. And so, adding the two percent, I mean, if it's a rollover without, no increases anywhere, it would, you know, would be still the one million, six-eight-two. So, forty-four thousand isn't a lot of money, especially if they take sixteen thousand out for the AMES money. Well, there's a letter and the correspondence says that they're not going to do that now. It just came, I just saw an email for it before. No, I think it's still on the, uh, it released a thirty-day, unfortunately, proposed restoration of the May.
Yeah, there was a proposal to reinstate it, but there were conditions.
There are, uh, that's what they're saying.
And the conditions don't, don't hold for us.
Doesn't look like it. So, we still can't count on it.
So, the state's budget has to be passed by March 31st, so we should know if the state follows their own guidelines before we adopt ours, whether or not we're going to get that AME rate. It was sixteen-five last year.
Is there any possibility that the, uh, the money that was given to the water and sewer funds could be less this year for two thousand nineteen-twenty because of the increased rent that was instituted for the sewer rent?
I can look at that. I did, um, lower it by five thousand in each fund last year for the year we're currently in. It was like twenty-seven. I brought it down to the twenty-two or twenty-three.
Okay.
We're looking at some major, um, infrastructure repairs in our buildings, this building, the firehouse, et cetera, et cetera. Which to me is a lot more than forty-four thousand that we may, that we may be able to get from additional taxes. I'm not sure where the money's going to come from.
When will we get additional money?
No, we're looking for additional expenses, additional money. Additional expenses coming up.
You're going to take those out of the, the social fund?
The fund balance.
But the fund, if we keep digging into the fund balance?
Or some.
We can take some of it, they dug into the fund balance, it's like a roof flush.
Right.
We get to the tune of like ninety thousand.
Yep.
Repairs are expensive.
If you just take one of the, um, that's a different topic.
I think if we, I think we can take one, a larger one out. I think we've kind of replenished that, haven't we, from the eighty-five? Don't we have, what is our fund balance right now? Or what do you expect it to be? Is it like five hundred?
It was in the fives at the end of, um, May 31st. I don't, I haven't had a projection yet because the water is going to be issued.
Right.
I think it's still a little too early to tell.
There are a number of other smaller but large projects, like, you know, I think I was talking to Ruth Ann earlier, the, the bandstand, the electric there has problems. If you go down there and take a look at it, there's carpentry work needed there. So, I mean, I don't know what we can fit in the budget, but these are things that, you know, will heat up any kind of forty-four thousand. And if it's less sixteen thousand, you know, I mean, if you needed an answer now, I would say, I would bring it to the cap. Not because I want to increase, but I think we have to because it's not a lot of money.
Yeah, I, I think we should go to the cap, too.
Anyone else have feelings or need more time on that? If, would it be helpful tonight or do you want us to, to meet next?
Um, what I could do is, I needed a number to start, a bottom line to start working towards. So, I could start working towards a budget including it, and we could always, if we decide not to raise it, then we'll just have to start cutting expenses to get rid of it.
When will we get the answer on the AME money? Or is that just going?
We would have to know by March 31st. That's the deadline for the state to pass the budget.
Do they usually come up with a prelimin- not a preliminary, like, you know, week before or whatever, a preliminary draft?
They have, there's, they have an executive budget, um, which I believe is already out. And then they, they just do an executive, and then they go straight to the adopter.
Okay.
What about, was it the pave or the EWR money? Did we hear anything else about whether or not that's coming through this year?
That's still being talked about.
That'll be in the state budget, too.
The snow removal money is probably not going to happen because we didn't get it last year. But the pave and the CHIPS.
We got, we got the snow removal. We got, we got all three last year. I know they threatened not to, but I'm pretty sure we got all three.
Okay, moving along. I think you can work with that. Probably we're going to be in agreement with that.
So, property tax salaries, benefits, um, I think the current handbook has health insurance rates outlined through nineteen-twenty.
Yep.
Um, so, I'm going to assume that we're going to keep that and not make any more changes.
Yep.
Professional services contracts, um, keeping our attorneys right now.
Yeah.
Um, we're looking at engineers. Any other professional services that we need to add?
I think engineers are going to be probably, would be, I mean, it's going to be the same as BART, I would imagine.
Right.
I don't know if you need, it's not an additional, I mean, something, we might need even more than what we've been using BART.
Is, is the, is the rate the same as BART's rate?
I think it's a little bit higher. Or, well, it depends on who they're using. They have like a number of different.
Yep, yep.
Which I have here.
The auditors, we have a contract that goes up like five percent every year for five years, so that's pretty steady. Additions to villagers' vehicles fleet, um, we need to add more vehicles. We usually try to keep one payment per department, doesn't mean we have to. So, if we're going to purchase a truck with all of CHIPS money for the highway department, is there another vehicle that we might want to put into the budget for them?
I think we'd have to ask the departments, and that could be on their wish list.
Okay.
Except for Bugsy.
Any large purchases, any repairs to municipal buildings? So, I know we need to talk about the firehouse. Several things there. I think we need to talk about, um, maybe a wall. We need to talk about paving, both parking lots and streets.
I was hoping to do and discuss tonight, if we, uh, if we talk about the attorney, or the, uh, the engineering consultants, is once we get them on, we can have them look at, they, they would be able to give us prices on, on quotes on like the paving. So, I was hoping to do that next week. If we can do that, I can meet with them next week, and maybe we can get preliminary numbers so we know what we can do or not do.
Okay.
And the other, if we have to do something with this roof, so we're going to, I'm going to call Roof and Company and have them give us a price there and then go with our procurement policy, but we have to have the roof done.
Yes.
So, that's one, one expense. The wall on Main Street that's been collapsed forever, you know, we have an engineering report, hopefully do soon, um, and find the cost on that.
Anything else in this building?
What about this floor?
Um, this floor, we got, this, this the expense on that. I don't know what that is.
That's in the insurance.
Yeah, the insurance had paid for it, yeah.
Did it pay for all, they paid for property?
They paid for carpeting. It might be a little bit more if we go something else. They do have samples and stuff, so it's just aren't very attractive for epoxy, so. Might be another way to go. It's leaking in the corner again, so, not going to put carpeting down again. And that's coming from the wall, not from the roof, I think.
Um, Lynn, Steve, do you have any big items that you can think of?
The, uh, parking meter comes off.
Yes. And off this year.
Is it this month or next?
March is the last year.
March, okay.
Um, so, that's three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars a month plus.
A little bit, but it helps.
It helps, definitely helps. So, paving sidewalks, storm drains, um, CHIPS, we'll go through that. Um, I know Fish Hill Avenue is a hot topic, is a hot topic, um, a couple other streets. So, we really have to decide, um, what we're going to pave either in the spring or next year. Um...
So, again, if we have engineers that'll be able to help, but we can get in RFP out quickly, I think.
And then it's just, any thoughts, comments on any expenses, even if it's everyday stuff? Just let me know. We can talk about it. Um, hey, what do we pay for the fax machine? Seriously, whatever. You know, always ask questions. I don't mind. Look into something, um, looking to change, whatever. And then wish lists. I always tell all the departments, throw out your biggest wish, some of it as an absolute no, but I'd rather them ask and know what's going on, and then some stuff we might be able to do.
What is the age of the computers in this office and, and are we at a point where we need to turn them over to new ones or?
Yes, so Jeff is the oldest. He definitely needs a new computer. Right before this meeting, I emailed Managed Technologies, um, asking them what we need to do for next year. Our computers are slightly older, and they run an old version of Windows. Microsoft will no longer support Windows in January of twenty-twenty. So, there, that's forcing us to switch Windows. Some of the computers, I believe, cannot handle the new version because they're too old, like Jeff's, maybe mine. Anthony had said some computers just might need a little upgrading, not to be completely replaced. So, I emailed him to ask him what we need to do for that. Um, but that's something we can't control. Bonds will be updated, and that's good. Anything else?
One thing, I'd just ask the board to look at the raises and the increases for both, for everything. I think it's outlined here pretty easy, right? There's the percentages with the increased, the annual increase. So, take a look at those, so we can get those numbers back or decide on that.
Well, if CHIPS goes away, and, and goes away, then the larger numbers will not be feasible.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think, I think Michelle put all of them down just for comparison, so we know if they're number.
If it goes away, it's like, what, fourteen thousand?
Sixteen-five.
Sixteen-five?
Can you do, um, I, I think this one is outrageous. Um, can you do a one percent, one and a half, a two percent? The stipends on the second, on the first page?
Yeah, so, the reason why I did bigger numbers is because the stipends are smaller. So, like one percent on the stipends for the year, um, would be seventy-two dollars for the year divided by twelve, so it's five and a half dollars a month, but I can show it.
But it, it just seems out of line.
No problem.
Yeah.
I, I, the way, and I asked, and I asked Michelle to do this, I mean, because we haven't, we haven't had raises for five years. And I think we get in a position, whether we leave or not, that all of a sudden you're way out of line, and you're going to have to ask for like fifty percent more or whatever, because we're asking for a hundred-and-eighty dollars more a year at two and a half percent.
You're talking about us, for the board, you mean?
What's that, for the board, yeah, we're looking at the board, you know? I mean, a five or ten might be out of the question or whatever, but, you know, like, if we're talking no raise in five years and asking for a hundred-and-eighty-one dollars, I, I don't see that as a lot.
Well, I mean, the thing is, you've got, um, oh, no, sorry.
I'm talking about the board.
Yeah.
I mean, Camille's would go up sixty-one dollars, so that could bring it to bank.
She has never shown, she's never.
She's been here, yes, she has.
How many times?
I don't know. She owes us money, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can redo it if you'd like to see one, two.
I'd like to see smaller numbers.
That's the purpose of this, is to start the discussion, from one and two is done.
And the second call, the second section is, that's for the stipend. So, everyone understand that?
Yep.
Okay, just in case. Alright.
And on the employee one at the bottom, I, it includes FICA and includes the pension, so it's the total increase to the fund, and I have it broken down by fund because I think that's important.
What was that last one, sorry?
I have it broken down by fund for the employees.
Oh, okay.
Water and sewer are important, but most of our discussion is about the general fund because water and sewer are relatively self-sustainable, it should be. And that's all I have for tonight. Anybody else have questions?
Is there anything you need that's changed from the previous?
Um, no, what, I'm going to, after I get all the worksheets back from the departments, I'm going to start doing meetings, um, like we did last year with the, some names with the trustee. You get to work on the firehouse stuff. Um, Fran's going to help me with water and sewer. Marie's going to help me with highway. Dave, I think you did police last year. Um, you could do it again if you want to.
Yeah.
And Lynn, I don't think you had a department?
I didn't?
Aw, man.
If you have, you can help me do some stuff around Village Hall if you have any input. On that, um, or maybe, um, one rec submits it, like some of the smaller boards, we could go over it.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at that.
Sure.
That interests me.
Okay.
Okay.
Just want us to know when you're scheduling meetings.
Yeah. Definitely nothing this week, um, probably towards the end of next week.
Okay, thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you. Really, thank you, thank you for laying it out in such a way that it's so easy to understand. I've seen other ones like this in this, like.
That is great.
I'm trying. Thank you. No, it looks great, thank you.
Larry, you as up?
Good evening, everybody. For the month of January, we had sixty-three calls of service. We had, uh, two arrests, one for reckless endangerment and one for a penalty attempt to court, which was an oral protection. Both were in the, in the confines of the village. We had fourteen movie summonses. We had a total of forty-four parking summonses, a total of fifty-eight summonses for the month. Just to give you a little, uh, heads up, we have the new vehicle out on the road. It started, uh, beginning of the month. I have it specifically on the midnight shift for now to break it in. Uh, so, if anybody's seen it, I'm getting a lot of good feedback from the new design. Uh, thank you for purchasing the new vehicle, because we really need it. It replaced a two-thousand-and-six Ford Explorer that was just, every month was another repair. It was just sucking us dry. So, I appreciate that, and so do my officers. Couple of things I know we spoke about in the past, soon as the weather gets a little nicer, I like to go, uh, members of the board to go over all the parking signs in the village to try to get everything where people can understand what each sign means. And one's not, one on one side of the street, one's not on the other, like the four-hour park-in, the two-hour park-in, and stuff like that. The no parking, the no standing only. I just meant, I just wanted to take another U-turn down the bottom of the village while there's three cars sitting there waiting to pick up passengers. I got blinded, as we've been talking about in the past. So, the cones I had put up worked for a little while, but as soon as you take the cones down, they go right back to what they do. I actually spent, I asked a guy gentleman to move his car, and he just like looked at me like, you know, as he's sitting right in front of the, no parking, no standing, no nothing.
Why didn't you take it?
I would have, I didn't have my ticket booked in my personal car.
It's not right, it's not there, people stop.
I have guys going down there now, so it's going to be on a mandatory, go down there, you know, constantly. I mean, we have the schedule, we have the schedule in some of the cars of the, of when the trains come and go, because that seems to be the biggest thing. I understand if it's, if it's snowing, if it's sleeting, we get it. I, I, we're not here to be, you know, go over, give everybody ticks. But a lot of people like, I've been doing this for twenty years, you can't tell me, it, it's got to stop. I mean, it's up to the, also the villagers to understand. It's, it's a hazard. You're coming down at six o'clock at night, you get the lights on, it's going to cause an accident, plain and simple.
Or get somebody, because you can't see them. Everybody wears a black coat.
Yeah.
You can't see someone crossing the street there either.
No.
If you're taking the left to the right.
Yeah, it's very dangerous on, on, on a bunch of different, different aspects of it. One thing I'm looking to do also, I know a big thing lately, or not lately, even last year, the year before, was people not cleaning up sidewalks, and that's up to us, up with after twenty-four hours of the, I believe it's twenty-four hours after the.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. The snow falling, you got to clean your, your, your streets in front of your houses and businesses.
Except, except for Main Street, it's nine a.m.
Okay.
What's the main street?
Nine a.m.
Right. My concern with some of that is, when my officers go to give the summons, they actually have to do what we do when we do an arrest report. So we gotta, we have to get the information of the owner, we have to go upstairs, write a whole informational, give a death appearance ticket to the owner or the rentee, uh, on this, and it's like so tight, it's like, well, as long as we have an arrest. I wanna try to simplify it, and I wanna try to make it like a parking summons. You go up with your ticket book, you didn't remove your, your license note, here you go, and you show up the night of the, uh, the moving violations. Because it really takes my officer out of patrol for a good forty minutes, going through all this, having to go upstairs and do everything for the court, handing it over to the court. And, you know, it, it's just very, very time consuming, I'd rather just be able to give the summons that way. I'm gonna speak to the court on that and see what we can do with, try to easing that up. Uh, I was just on the phone, I know you're into budget talks, I was just on the phone, uh, last couple of days with our state representatives, I'm trying to get some grant money for things that I would like to give to the village. Um, I gotta give them a wish list on what I'm looking for, I'm looking for a couple more cameras on Main Street, just for, you know, safety reasons, for everything else, the cameras we put up already, have gotten a couple of individuals that we need to ID, uh, specifically with the one gentleman that went through the village wreck in the village last year, and we IDed him from that. I'd like to get a camera put on, right where the MTA's, on the, the underpass is, I'd like to put a camera right there, and a camera on the opposite side. It seems to be those are the areas that we've had a lot of vandalism over the last couple of years, and kicking the windows out, uh, on the glass of themselves there. I'd like to get one up, probably right on the firehouse, because we own the firehouse, so I wouldn't have to get a specific permit from anybody, and put one there that covers the middle of the village, and if I can get one up where the traffic light is, I'd like to do that also. It's, it's, you know, we have to catch up in, into the times now, because it's really, you know, things go on that we're not, we're not gonna be able to see all the time, and if we have that, I think it's just for safety wise, for the entire re- residents of the village, it's just paramount. Uh, depending what money they can give us, depending what we're, we're gonna look at. Uh, basically, if I ask for such a does amount, I usually get not even half, I usually get a third, so I'm kinda really pushing them on giving us, I'm, I'm shooting for the moon on this one to see if I can get that, because with that, we also gotta update some of the computer programs we have, and the storage facility that's up on the second floor, which I think you guys have in the budget ready for the tower and stuff like that, that we're gonna put all of the, uh, computers into that back room. Uh, my last final thing would be, I'm looking for, I'm looking to, uh, do some interviews with some new officers, uh, possible hirees. As, as we close to the summer, I'm expecting to lose possibly two officers, uh, it's not a definite, but I'd like to get the process going now, so this way, I'm not blindsided at the last minute when, if somebody gets picked up by another department, or somebody retires, and I have nobody to fill that position. And I'm looking to hire Nico back, uh, if he's, if he wants to go back, if not, I'm looking for another ticket officer as we get closer towards the, the warmer months when we have the tourists coming back. Thank you.
Larry, one thing, um, maybe a couple things, could you add a sheet like, uh, for the monthly report with comparisons for, you know, aligning for, to compare the total number of tickets per month? And, you know, the total number of, uh, calls? So like on this one, you have, uh, tickets fifty-eight, can we get like prior months so I can compare those?
How many, how many, I can go, I can give you, I can go back up to a whole year if you want, if you just want that, if you want me to specifically put it on this one, how many months?
Well, no, not on this one, yeah, if you could do it for the year, and then like going forward, so we could just, you know, we could have that, or, you know, well, then I'd have something to compare up to.
Yeah.
To date, you mean, like an account to date? Like an account to date? No, like how many per month we, we've issued, so we can see how active we are.
Okay, if you want per month, again, from, from the prev, because, because on this it has what we did in January, so now if next month, you want January's number and this number?
Yeah, or if we can get the last year and then just print that out and I'll have it for, I can just bring that with me and compare.
Yeah, I could, I could do that, or I can update you every three months and give you the total for every, every quarter, and give you that, I can do either one, no problem.
Thank you. You're welcome. How much is a, uh, summons or ticket for not cleaning up your sidewalk?
I believe that's up to the court, is it the court that does that, I think the judge, the judges last ago.
I thought, I thought it was a fixed amount.
I heard two hundred and seventy-five dollars last week, that's, I was just wondering if that was accurate.
I'm, I'm not positive, I'm not positive on that, um, I, I know, I know they have to get, it summons from the court and it goes before the court, I think Judge Castillo would do something like that, I'm not positive, I will check with him, and I can, I can let you know.
Does it go to the building owner? Sorry.
It should go to the building owner, yes, um, and I think if it's, if, is it a repeat offense also, we go, it, it, it could be, summons goes higher, if you're constantly doing it, not, not, and you're getting a summons like every month or every other month or whatever, for a certain amount of fractions, I think it goes higher, I'm not positive on that.
The, the way the code is written, it's the owner or the occupant?
Is it the owner or the occupant?
Yeah.
So they make their own deal with the occupant, okay.
I worked with Kathy a while, we never completed it, but there, to look at the fines that we have in our code versus what they have, and there's a lot of the fines that they pull from the state book that they have, she has a whole book of.
Yeah, he's got a whole, a specific book that all, all different fines are for certain things, what he can charge up to, or what, what the least amount he can charge.
So some of it is just referred to that.
Yeah, it's almo, it's almost like the parking that we did in down at the Evans and Horton, which is standard fifty, fifty dollars, and I think if it's happens, uh, second, third time, it goes higher.
Yep, it does.
I mean, that'd be some, you can look at also, I mean.
Um, on the, um, signs?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want me to get me the list, so that we can make sure that the code is updated?
Yep, I have to, I have to do a full walk around through the whole village, and I'd like to go with, you know, again, whatever board number it wants, so just waiting for the weather to break a little bit, so we can really go over after this. I mean, try to walk out there now with some of the ashes out there, so a little dodgy, just so we can go over the entire village and figure out what, what we can do and what's feasible.
Thank you. Monthly reports, recreation.
Okay, and then, I realize that the report that you have is just the, um, budget work that we were doing, we had a very extensive budget meeting, um, at the holiday, um, so some of the things are down, we're, we're, we're working on. Um, we are gonna put new doors, we have estimates to put new doors down on the, um, what do you call it, building, would be?
Uh, Mayor's Park Shed.
Mayor's Park Shed, so, um, we're gonna go forward with that, um, there's a question in the budget, like, uh, is a line out of a dark side, but I can check with Michelle on that, that question.
The, uh, door, the, uh, door prices, what was the lowest we got on that?
Um, twenty-eight hundred. Duchess, Duchess, well, actually, we have one, we have, uh, two, um, uh, overhead doors in Hudson Valley was, uh, two thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars, and Duchess overhead doors is twenty-eight fifty. Um, Deff's overhead doors, also does, all the doors for the highway department, correct? And so, John, and I, Miranda and I reviewed these tonight, and their layout and their description, we felt confident would go with the Duchess overhead doors, which.
Is, is this the structure that, where the, um?
Storage, uh, machines.
Is the storage shed?
By the basketball court.
By the basketball court.
Oh, in the back.
Right, in the back corner.
Hey, in the back.
Okay, and the, it, it needs a roll-up door because?
Right now it has doors that you, not oversized doors that you can't open.
Okay, it, but you need oversized doors or large doors because equipment is rolled into there, it, it houses.
Yes.
Houses what?
What goes in there, the, the pieces that are right there?
Tractors?
Mowers? Um, right now, we have a, the Ford tractor sits in there, the electric car sits in there, um, there's a few, um, tow behind rakes for the tractors in there, there's snow fencing, there's Christmas decorations for the last forty or fifty years.
So the question, I have to ask the question, is it better to repair that at the two hundred and three thousand dollars, or move everything to the highway garage?
I think one of the things we were thinking about is, well, we got a list of the things we wanted to, to rid the village of, or to sell.
Yeah.
But we have to go through a process on that, and that would be the Ford tractor and some of the other equipment in there, but then that leaves to the place for the scag mower, I believe, if we use that, and right now you can't, you can't use those doors. You have to do, you have to basically do the whole frame and everything over again, I think, the way it is now, it's all steel. So right now, they're just kind of half-opened, or they, they don't shut, there's some kind of.
So, so why do we have it, I, is there, is there no room in the highway garage for that equipment?
No.
There is no room?
No.
Okay.
I have three bays, one of them is instantly given up to the police department, because they have to keep their cars in, especially during the colder months. Um, and then the middle bay is where I usually have vehicles I'm working on, and then in the really cold months, I have to have the garbage truck in.
Yeah.
Uh, the night before we, uh, go out.
Okay, it just seems to have a, a lot of money.
Hopefully, it is, but hopefully it'll be efficient and won't need to be repaired in a long time, because it won't rust, you know, the doors are there now, I mean, I, if I had to go down there and get anything out, I couldn't. You know, you can't open the doors, right?
You're saying that's, we have the money in this year's budget?
Yes, yep, yep, what we're trying to do is go down a list of things, and around the different recreation commission properties, um, the other thing, the, the other thing we're looking at, Budgie's here, it's at the very end of that, is, um, a walk-behind leaf blower, um, for cleaning out the leaves, the, this would be different than having to walk along with something on your back, this is a commercial-grade, um, leaf blower. I can talk to Dave about it, because he's, he sent me on and said, just look at the better quality one, um, and so we looked at, it's a commercial grade, and I think it was a twenty-one, that we just looked at, was that how much it was, twenty-one hundred?
The other one you just showed me was twenty-two hundred.
It would be a shared venture between the recreation department and the highway department, and that money is also in the budget, is money in the budget to do that. We're gonna replace the grills down at Dark Side Park, so we made a decision tonight which grills, and I can fool you with it, not Dark Side Park, I'm saying Mayor's Park.
So the, the, how much are we talking about for the, uh, this is probably not.
A walk-behind leaf blower.
Is that in the two thousand eighteen, nineteen, or what, come on to two thousand nineteen, twenty?
Two thousand eighteen, nineteen.
So you've already got the money for that?
We have the money in the budget for that.
You have the money in the, it's budget for the doors.
And we have the money in the budget for the doors.
How much money do you have in the budget?
Obviously, money, I, I, my understanding is these things have come up repeatedly for the recreation commission, you know, I went over old minutes and stuff, and we don't seem to, um, utilize the funds as efficiently as we would like to, so we can probably be put in the budget. The big thing that I just wanna call your attention to, those are some of the small ones, really considering, the big thing is electrical issues, when we went to do the lights for the Christmas decorations, the bandstand is in desperate need of a, a review of their electrical, a lot of things are working properly, they're, um, you know, you have a wooden structure like that, and you have electrical stuff, you know, you, things break and fall, so, um, I'm, we're recommending that we have a logical review of the bandstand, the, the out, the, the electrical at Mayor's Park, and electrical at La Conville, because, correct me, you might know more about La Conville than I do, but there must be a, 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 um.
I think there's just a flat toll light.
Right. Just to, we should just look at all three of those areas and see if there's something we should be putting in the budget, so I guess the bandstand is ours, so I should.
Yeah.
We just thought we were making a recommendation, but I guess it's.
It's under your purview.
Uh, thank you, thank you, yes, I'm, I'm doing so well with doors and blowers, I can do plugs too, I guess. Um, so that's probably one of the biggest things, um, that we probably have to look at. Just to follow up, some questions for the last one, I'm sorry it's not on here, but for the skate park, uh, Marie asked when, I hate to jump on, because it's not on here, Marie, so if you just, remember at our last meeting, which was a while ago, you asked when the pits, the test pits were done for the skate park?
When the.
What time of day they were done, the tides, what?
Oh, right, right, right.
I hate to not have it written down, but I just wanted to get back to you, because I got this information, it was at low tide.
It was at low tide?
It was at low tide, but Budgie was there, I hate to call you Budgie, but, I don't know, as long as everybody else calls him, I'm gonna get a nickname pretty soon, I think, but anyway, Budgie was there when they were digging them, and it had just rained considerably prior to the test pits being done, so.
Yeah, the, the whole field was saturated for days before that.
But it was still at low tide?
But it was still at low tide.
Did they, did they cover the test pits already, or did they leave them open? Usually they leave them open for a while.
No, then we were, you specifically said they had to be put back together.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but usually you wanna see, you would wanna see the different tides, or, you know.
I don't, I don't think this is still what I had.
I have no idea. Who did the test pits? Do you know who did them?
That would have to ask Michelle Hefford again.
The name of the, um, uh, I don't remember.
The engineering people that did it.
All right, well, we should follow up on that and see if there's a way to determine if that would affect it, it obviously seems it would affect it.
Yep, well, I did, I did bring that up to Michelle, and I'll see her again tomorrow, lucky me, and I'll mention that to her, but I don't know if they, and this was a freebie, we had people coming out to do that to them, so I don't know if somebody's gonna be willing to go out, and we would have to have them pay to come back and do.
Okay. I mean, if we do, we should do it in the spring, and we should do it as I died.
Yeah, we can't go out there now.
So it turns out, in the.
Which is a point too, if you can't go out there for no reason.
As it turns out, the eighteen nineteen budget, recreation for repairs and improvements, you've got eighty-three hundred dollars. You started out the year with sixty-five hundred, and now you've got eighty-three hundred, somehow you've picked up eighteen hundred dollars, so you have the funds for the, the roll-up door and whatever the, the lease thing is.
Yes.
Yeah, I think she's been talking to Michelle.
There are a couple of things that are over expended, or that are higher than what one would expect at this time of year, but in general, you look good.
Yeah, which ones are higher than you would expect?
Which one?
Which, which one, what are you looking at?
I'm looking at parks and rec, repairs and improvements, eighty-one hundred dollars, parks and rec, repairs and improvements, it's eighty-three hundred ten dollars is remaining in the budget. As of January thirty-first, so it's great.
I don't understand, I wanna know what line is over.
What line is over? Um, the equipment is over, computer support is over, and Christmas decorations are over.
Well, Christmas decorations are over, because we got charged with something that Jeff ordered, so I'll check with that with Michelle tomorrow. We did purchase new Christmas lights for the bandstand, um, but I noticed on the printout I got that there was something ran out to Jeff V, as well as our Christmas decorations, he, he spent something like.
How much was it?
Like two hundred and fifty dollars or something.
I owed it two different things for you guys, at Steve's request, one was lights, and one was, I think, wiring or cable or something, now it may have come under Jeff's name, because, you know, that's how it goes through when we do it, when we do an order. Uh, but there were two different, and two different companies, Steve had asked for, one was lights and one was.
I'll check with Michelle, we can move some funds around and cover that, but, you know, we, we definitely needed new lights, and if anyone needs any, why, why, we have a lot of it now, in case we have to make any more. But Steve and John did a great job, they put together all those, they cut the water and put all those new, brand-new, strung-in lights, so it's great. You know, you just plug them in without, sell them, whatever.
A question, you said the mulch that was put down over the upper rooted trees got washed away, now we had some, we paid for that, we had somebody come in and do that, and we paid for that, by a professional company, who did that?
That was, um, I'll have to check, that was part of the insurance.
Right, so it, it should be.
The pavers down at the river?
No, the mulch they put down over the trees, yeah, where the, where the trees went down, they put new trees up, they, the, what the company was?
Roger Cherico did the pavers.
Yeah, Cherico did the pavers, but somebody did mulch.
Might have been Cedar Hill.
Might have been Cedar Hill, yeah, but they should have, my thinking is they should have known what they were doing and not put something down there that would wash away.
Well, they did, but we asked them to do, it was to mulch it, and unfortunately, we had that storm when the water came up over, that's when it took all the mulch and took it away, so it might not have been the best. Mulching might not have been the best, I think something probably needs to be done before, you know, the springtime comes and we have people tripping over them again, so I guess I have to look at that too, okay. Lots of influence.
All right, maybe look at an option for mulch, because that will, that's gonna keep happening again, and the whole thing is littered with, with debris from the river and everything, so maybe we shouldn't go with mulch.
Right.
Or anticipate it's gonna be washed away once a year and replaced in the spring.
Right.
I mean, I don't think that's the, the fault of the, uh, landscaper.
But probably something definitely needs to be put up there before.
Mulch doesn't make sense though, I mean, remember that's the rainstorm?
Yeah.
The, the water was up over.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you for moving things ahead here.
With them, thank you very much. Thank you, with them.
Appreciate it, thank you for working with us.
Oh, and guess what, we need members, so if you could put an ad in the paper, because I know we have members that are rolling, you know, it's coming up, I mean, I did something on social media, and all I got was, thank you with the info.
There you go.
What you do? Tap, tap to the plate.
Okay, I'll follow up. Here's your, if you want.
Thank you.
Uh, planning board, uh, old business, one twenty-four Main Street, what's that?
He's something, I thought, I thought he was playing, he was.
What's that?
Karen, I thought he was playing.
No. Uh, it's one twenty-four Main Street, that's Silver Spoon, uh, the scene, Abdul Ladi, uh, let's see, located in D-one National Hist- Historic District, an application for change of permitted use to interior alteration for chapter one thirty-four subsection one thirty-four dash nine of the village code, change of permitted use from restaurant to hotel. Change of permitted use from restaurant to hotel, ten rooms total, is required from the planning board. Change of application from twelve rooms to ten rooms received on twelve twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen. The application was further changed from five to four first-floor rooms, nine rooms total, on, uh, January twenty-fifth, after the January twenty-fourth workshop discussion on the comprehensive plan goal to maintain Main Street storefronts. Planning board feels that the change meets what, that important goal. Uh, two thousand nineteen updated SECR guidelines now make the project the type-two exempt action, so no review is required. Uh, planning board understands that the applicant has approached the building board to purchase the front stoop property. The applicant will need to take ownership of that property to make the necessary modification to provide ADA-compliant access to the proposed new hotel. As, as this application is scheduled for public hearing on February fourteenth, it seems that this would likely happen after the final action on this application. In that case, the applicant will need to come back to the planning board for a site plan amendment for those modifications.
I noticed that the railings are gone.
Yes, they are. Is that a demo that wasn't...
We, we gave him the okay to buy the property, so what happened?
He hasn't contacted us.
Um, he, the last, I understood, is he objected to the, his lawyer objected to paying the legal fees.
Yeah.
But that's the way it goes.
That one's clear up for us, so. Okay, next, uh, ZBA, everyone.
Uh, we have three new applications, uh, two public hearings and a workshop all happening this Thursday. There's a application for a six-inch lot width variance at fifty-nine Morris Ave because of a survey error, apparently, um, when that property was subdivided, um, a couple of years ago. Um, Six Chestnuts Street, a shed was built in the backyard without a permit, um, so we're gonna, there, there are requests for variance for that, and they also want to put a, uh, six-foot gate that they found in the basement at the end of the driveway, so they need a variance for that. Um, Twenty-One Parsonage, that's the vacant lot with a shed or barn in it on the corner of Pine, and there's an application to convert that into a house, and they need a lot of variances for that.
Yeah, and cha- and change of views also.
Um, yes. So, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to them, um, and send it over to planning for the community and stuff.
And you understand how the six-inch lot, uh, variance came about?
Um, we're told that it was an error, so, the...
Actually, what happened was, um, the owners of fifty-seven fifty-nine Morris, the Barcivics...
Right, they bought the six inches and then when the...
They sold the six inches, they sold the six inches to sixty-one Morris in nineteen fifty, I can't remember if it was fifty-two or fifty, Chicky. Uh, because her foundation was six inches off, so that's how it happened.
But the error on this was from the, from the surveyors, in this case.
Right, two years ago, and they split...
When he, when the subdivision occurred.
Right, and was not the owner.
No, no, no.
Want to make that clear, that he didn't just go building this, and then he was going with the survey map that he was given and built with according to that, my understanding, right? The survey was taken, they plotted the, the property, they built the structure, and then we received a letter from Vaden Watson stating it's six inches off.
Yeah, so apparently, um, somebody did not read that that six inches had been sold, so the lot was split right down the middle, assuming that it was seventy feet each. And now that the, um, I guess the northern lot, the northern house is being sold, they want to clear up the lot width, um, for the bank and the lawyers.
The, uh, the one on Chestnut Street, since this is, since they didn't come for any application or anything, is there any fine being given on this or discussion of that?
I have not heard of any, the ZBA, of course, doesn't, um, give out fines, though, might be that, yeah, we did. Um, I have not heard, heard of any fines.
This would be a building inspector, but is there a fine?
Right, I, um... I understand that, um, a, a member of another board noticed the shed, um, had appeared or was being built and reported it, and then they, we have the referral to the designing board and the historic board.
Great, thank you, the signs look great, by the way, thank you. Did you get any, uh, were the people at the public hearing for Jimmy's, many or none?
Um, we don't, we don't have a hearing for that.
Oh, you did have that, that's our planning board's discussion, okay, sorry about that. Town of Phillips Town.
Good evening, I'm Chicky Farrell, and I just want to report that at our last town board meeting, we passed a resolution to extend and renew the six-month moratorium on vape shops in Phillips Town, and that has now been sent to the county for approval.
That it, brief one?
It's brief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, Historic District Review, uh, current projects and all our projects have been referred to us, but we have had no request to review any new applications at our monthly meeting, February thirteenth. Uh, Board Work Projects, question, what is the anticipated schedule for the formatting of the revised sixty-four with the legislative record and posting of final versions of the website? I think that Jeff sent her...
Ram, Rankin.
I thought that was Tom.
Is it? I thought, was that, I thought it was Tom.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I actually didn't put it up yet.
He, he said he was, I think, it sounded like he said it was, okay. Uh, number two, we continue to work through design standards, have workshops scheduled for February tenth and the twenty-seventh. Once tech's, uh, edits are complete, we'll need to, uh, work with LA to incorporate into the template and with images. Board Operations Code Enforcement Follow-Up, recently, Mayor Marandy has requested our feedback regarding board approval, compliance check, enforcement of violations, and our general impressions of the process in place with the building inspector as it relates to our responsibility. We have discussed it internally and attached our thoughts for your consideration. Um, we will be following up on that, it was a very lengthy, lengthy, lengthy report with comparisons and wish lists, and, uh, so we'll go over that and, uh, see what we can do, there definitely needs to be some improvement between, uh, the building inspector and, and, and board. Um, I haven't heard from the other boards, but I do hear from the HDRV, so I'll follow up on this. And if anyone, after reading that, asks questions or wants to follow up or whatever, please email me. Fire Company, Steve?
Uh, yeah, there is, actually, we have to report. Uh, in January, Cold Spring Fire Company Number One responded to fourteen calls.
Here we go.
There you go.
Excellent. Also, Steve and I did a walkthrough with...
I was gonna mention that.
Yeah, okay, didn't know.
Uh, we did, we, uh, the mayor and I did a walkthrough with the president and, is Ralph the vice president?
And I think he's just a person that...
Concerned member.
He communicates well.
He does, yeah. Anyway, uh, we, we reviewed the, uh, their requests for, uh, for repairs on a building that belongs to the village. Um, and, uh, spent about an hour looking at some of the problems that they have, uh, structural issues, uh, problems with the, uh, the main floor in their, uh...
Meeting room.
Their meeting room area, which has some sagging in the concrete and, uh, uh, and the condition of the oil burner, which is ancient in the basement, needs to be replaced, water heaters, uh, a, um, Americans with Disabilities, uh, requirements on their bathrooms that all have to be met, there, there was quite a list of things off the top of my head, that's what I came up with. So, we, uh, uh, obviously, it's a lot of things that, that, that we're gonna have to do there to, to bring the village, uh, property up to, to snuff, but, uh, in terms of the requirements of, for the fire company itself, I, I don't really, I don't know how much we can do, uh, with the, with the property that we have there.
Do you have an estimate of the totals?
No, they're, they were supposed to be getting them.
Right, right, now, that, they have already gotten a lot of their own estimates, or they're getting their own estimates for like the facade, which is falling off, the brick facade is, is deteriorating, uh, what were the other things, uh?
There's a, one of the mains, the mains support in the, uh, in the back bar pools, or pool room...
Beneath it.
It's twisting, and that needs to be, has to be supported and have a new beam, uh, put in there, new post. The floor on the, uh, main structure, which is, in the main meeting room, which is like forty by forty, um...
Concrete.
I guess they poured over and the, uh, substrate wasn't compacted enough, so there's a space between it now, and in one spot, it's, it's sagging. So, they did, when they did the, uh, engineering report, they, you know, drilled down and looked through, and there's like a space now, and so...
Is Jimmy Hoffa there?
Was that?
Is Jimmy Hoffa there?
Jimmy Hoffa could be there, I guess.
He knows.
So, is that the, um, what else? The front bricks on...
The apron.
Yeah, the apron, the paving needs to be done, um, the bricks on the front, not sure if they're secured to the walls properly, uh, or at all, so this section's where you can see it bulging a bit and afraid that that's gonna continue to pop out and, and some of the bottom ones have already moved out.
Well, at the very least, that, that has to be removed, uh, for safety reasons, uh, there's a, there's a center block wall behind those bricks. It's not an actual structural brick wall, it's a veneer, so, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's in pretty bad shape.
Marie, when we did the Main Street project, we talked about paving in front of...
And they refused to...
And they refused.
They refused to let us pay it.
We could have paid twenty percent of the price, and they didn't, at that point, for whatever reason, they didn't want us to touch it.
Who refused, the fire company?
Right.
And we could have...
Good to know.
Yep.
They have a reason?
There was something about the, the way the trucks were delivered and...
They didn't believe that, uh, what our engineering firm had specced was sufficient for the weight of their fire truck, number one. And number two, they felt that the, uh, angle of the, um, of the new paving would be such that the truck would bottom out either on entrance or exit, uh, but, uh, to be clear, it was the section between what would have been the curb line, there was no curb there, and the end of the sidewalk, so it was a section of about eight to ten feet. It did not go anywhere up to the front of the building, nowhere near the front of the building.
I remember that, and, yeah, they were afraid, afraid it would raise it up too much.
So that they would, um...
So their truck would hit, they're all drive loads at one time.
We were afraid of something that they didn't believe because our, our people who were doing the paving would, you know, would have cut it down and would have done it, where it needed to be done.
And, and we had specced, um, thicker concrete there, um, than, than any other place on Main Street, but they said no, and so we just let it be.
Yeah, they're getting prices on that.
And another thing with the engineering, when, if we get a firm on, I want them to have them look at the, the heating system and not just replace as-is because it's just one huge boiler that's pumping everything all the way across the, the whole firehouse.
On that one, we can get potentially nice certified.
Yes, so we'll look into that, but we'll see what, what they can, we need a design.
We need a...
Unless somebody has a design.
Well, that's what nicer, uh, nicer, uh, funds would be used for, to determine the most effective and efficient heating.
Contact for that. I mean, it's, can, nicer, it's grant or...
Yes.
So, you may or may not get it, or when would you, how long would that take?
Probably a week or more.
Oh, no, no, for them to actually get back and then say if they're gonna...
Oh, I, I don't know, I don't know what their lead time is, or whether they have a, you know, a, a cycle, I don't know.
Okay.
But they, I'd ask them for two, two assistance areas, one was the design of the heating system, and the other was the implementation. The second one, they don't do, unless you go from one type of fuel source to a different type of fuel source, where the original fuel source is wood or coal.
Which probably was.
And we don't qualify.
Um, if we're gonna be digging up there, we need to put a water meter there, I don't believe there's a water meter there, we really should put one in.
There, um, there is no water meter there, um, and we should put one in.
To speak to that, there is a water meter, it's in the closet.
It's in the closet, yeah.
And it's such a small area that they, when we did the project, they couldn't get in there to install, to, to replace it. So it doesn't appear in there, it's not the new technology.
Okay, so, so we need a new one.
If you're opening things up, sure, but...
Do you, do you read it or not? Does, uh, does, um...
I'm not sure if that's not a list of things that we go back and read or not, because it's a manual read, so I don't know that it's, uh...
I don't thi- I don't thi-... I don't think it gets built.
Doesn't probably get built.
And I don't think there is a water rent or sewer rent that is paid for the building.
We should still read it so that we have numbers for ordinary purposes, um, so we should, if it's not.
And if in the future they become a district, they will get it.
Absolutely.
So we need a...
Yes.
Where's the water feed from for that building?
It's up at Church Street, if you're down at the sidewalk there, you would see the two, there's a larger, uh, curb belt for the two-inch line that comes in, and then I think there's a three-quarter.
So, right near the bathroom there, where, where it is there?
Almost right out from there.
Yeah, 'cause that, uh, we'll have to consider that with making that ADA compliant, uh, one of the, I mean, we, the mayor and I looked at it, and one of the bathrooms really only has to do one ADA, ADA compliant bathroom for that space, and there's two bathrooms there now. One's way too small to even consider, and the other one, we have to, we have to open a wall to get wheelchair access through just to get into the little vestibule where you pick which bathroom you want to go into, but that's right where that closet is with the water.
Yes, that, that's where it is, yeah.
So that might have to, that might be a time to put that, yeah, to put that in there when...
Okay, let's cross that bridge.
No, we're doing it next week.
Doing it next week, it'll be, get the jackhammer.
Okay, in the month of January, the Code Update Committee conducted two meetings. Uh, development began our presentation summarizing the reasons why the topic of evaluate permitting of conservation subdivisions will not be included in the Village Code. The direct document on the topic of evaluate permitting of outright demolition of its existing structures was refined. On the topic of amend subdivision...